Make sure I've got all of it in order. All right, well, there we go. Well, hey, thanks for coming out tonight, folks. So you all, you all know who I am. I don't think there's anybody here who's who's not aware of that. So in case you weren't aware, though, my name is Tom and the Associate Minister here. For those of you watching on YouTube after the fact, hi, I'm Tom. I'm the Associate Minister at the First Congregational Church of Long Beach. Thank you for coming out to my Parables of a Palestinian Rabbi. And there's Kathy. Kathy Chambers logging in. So I am going to share my screen. So I'm gonna do that. Right? So you can see my my Microsoft Teams right now, right?
Yes.
All right. And now you can see my PowerPoint. There we go. So, hey, everyone, welcome in. So, ah, thanks for coming up. As I said, this is not, in fact, a picture of me. This is way too handsome and brown to be me. This is a composite image by a Dutch artist of paintings and photographs to give us an idea of what Jesus of Nazareth might have looked like. You've probably seen some kind of historical reconstruction pictures before, but this one just looks so, so humane in a way that I just absolutely love. This must have come out. Really beautiful image. And I think it really encapsulates the kind of the, this is the Jesus that I want us to be to to be listening for and and learning about as we move through our class together tonight. So let me start off with a little bit of housekeeping and just kind of give you an overview of the course. So this is a sixth session opportunity for us to learn together about the parables, these kind of enigmatic stories that are at the heart of of Christian teaching and theology, certainly central to Jesus' life and ministry. And you don't have to come to every gathering if you don't want to. And certainly, as mentioned, there's there's the the Zoom offering on Tuesday nights, and then the following Sunday, the in-person version at First Church before worship at 8:30. But you don't have to come to every session, but if you do, you'll get to see us kind of chart the the storyline, if you will, of this little class. So tonight, we're starting off with short stories by Jesus. We're going to talk about what what even is a parable? What is that? What does that mean? Because it's it's harder to define than you might think, given how familiar we are with these little stories. Then we're going to do the prodigal son and talk about the art of retelling and sort of the way in which parables are retellings and invite retellings. We'll look at the the week after that. We'll do the Good Samaritan and the antisemitism and anti-Judaism. The way that that's been read onto the parables, been read into the New Testament, and how we can combat that as as progressive Christians now living side by side with our Jewish brothers and sisters and siblings. We'll take a look at some of the parables about economics, because there are quite a few of them with our guest Burton Newton, who is a podcaster and Bible scholar and Christian peace activist. So we're glad to welcome him there in that week. We'll look at the afterlife and the end of the world as we know it in in the parables and interrogate. You know, what do we mean when we say things like heaven or hell? What do those mean in parables? What is what is the end of the age actually look like for for Jesus or for us? And so we'll dig into that before circling back around and talking about short stories about Jesus. And I want to leave us with that question of is, can we read the Gospels as mega parables to quote the biblical scholar John Dominic Crossan? Let's get it right out of the way tonight as we dive into the parables. First, I'd love it if we could just kind of go around the circle here. And, you know, if you want to say your name, I think everybody kind of knows each other, but names are still helpful for me as I'm I'm actually getting to see you all in person now. Not in this class, obviously. And then why, why you decided to come out tonight, what you're interested in? But what I really want to know is, what is your favorite parable and why? What is your favorite parable and why? Is there one in particular that really resonates with you or really sticks with you? So I would offer that up to anyone who wants to go ahead and volunteer. I know it's always hard to take that that first step.
I'll start.
Thanks, Sarah.
I'm Sarah Schoenfelder, and I'm interested in this class because I wanted to know more about the parables. I think that they're so enigmatic that I don't understand them. So I want to see if I can figure out how to understand them better. And my favorite, and I don't know them all in, I would say, as well as maybe some of you do, certainly Tom, as well as you do. But my favorite one is the Good Samaritan. Because I love that story. I just love the story of the helper helping. So that's it.
It's it's a great one. It's one of the it's one of the classics. Thank you so much, Sarah. Who'd like to share next? Are you trying to talk to us, Pam?
Yeah, ten mutes. Hi, I'm Pam Chapin, and I'm interested in this class because I took Tom's first class and I was very impressed. And I wanted to learn more about his way of teaching and how he thinks. And one of my favorite parables is, oh, God, now I can't remember it, the prodigal son. I just like that redemption story. And I've heard different ministers preach it different ways, and I'm interested in what Tom has to say about it.
Look forward to next week because we're going to get really get into it, that particular parable. I think it's, we know it so well, and yet we don't know it at all, it feels like. So awesome. Thank you, Pam. Who's next? I'm just gonna go down the list to make this easy. Kathy, you want to share?
Kathy, Kathy, Kathy?
You Kathy. Yes, sorry. This is Kathy.
I don't really have a favorite one. I like both of the ones that they mentioned. I came to the class because I wanted, I want to be fed. And I think you're somebody who could do that. You know, that just, that's important to me. And I like both of the parables, the prodigal son and the Good Samaritan are very important parables as far as are equating Jesus' life with them. They have nothing to do with Jesus, but they kind of encapsulate everything we know about Him.
I love that. What a great, what a great description. That's awesome. Thanks, Kathy. All right, I have Karen as the next in my list.
Well, I've always liked the prodigal son. Because every time, almost every time I read that story, I feel for the poor elder son. It's and I want to know more about my reaction to that. But I, if you have a minute, I want to tell you a story about the yeah. The guy who got beat up on the road to Emmaus, not on Emmaus, but
Jericho, yeah.
Yeah, on the road to Jericho. Many years ago, I was serving as a as a adult advisor at Pilgrim Pines for youth activities. And of another advisor coming from the San Diego area had picked up a hitchhiker who wanted to be let off at the 210 freeway. Or the 10 freeway to go east. And he was obviously tired and mourned and in need of help of some kind. He was a young man. And they were heading for Pilgrim Pines for this long weekend with youth. And they rashly and christianly invited him to come along. Okay, so scenario, we're getting ready to reenact the story of the Good Samaritan. And I get cast as the chief of the robbers. And this kid gets cast as the victim. And so we robbers jump out from behind the curtain, and I'm really into my actions, and I'm looking very fiercely at him. And I see this look of utter horror and fear on his face. And it causes me to just stop, stock still and break down in tears. And at that point, the professionals in the room took over. And we had a long, deep dive into this young man. And he was, he had just been released from the brig. He was a Navy man, Navy boy. And was wanting to hitch his way back to somewhere in the Midwest where he was from. And he was, of course, AWOL at that point. Anyway, it it turned into one of the most deeply moving and deeply affecting jan camps in the history of Pilgrim Fellowship. And I will never forget encountering that look and how it affected me and and then how all of this developed after that.
Thank you so much for sharing. That's beautiful. And I think, wow, what a, what a way to, it's not a story at that point, right? It's it's life. It's 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 the people we meet. That's so great. Thank you so much for sharing that, Karen. I love that. Bo, would you like to, you know, say why you're interested to be here if you have a favorite parable?
Um, sure, I'm Bo Chandler. And I really like the lost sheep. I think it just, it's got so many nice lessons in it that everyone is important and that everyone and everything counts. And it's just, it's, I think it's got a really nice lesson to it. And I enjoy the prodigal son and and the other ones too, but I just didn't, I wanted to come up with something new. So I really enjoyed the last sheep.
It's a great one. Thanks, Bo. Appreciate it. Bob?
Yeah, I don't know. I just, I just had to bone up a little on what the parables were because I realized that the only parables I really know anything about or have heard are the the Good Samaritan and and the prodigal son. That's been two of the ones that have, I've sat in sessions previously at church discussing. And I I realized that if I looked at the list, thanks, Tom.
Yeah.
The list, it would be, I looked and I thought the list of parables that are listed in in the book you recommended. It struck me that the one that's really confusing to me in terms of what the message is, is the one about the farm laborers, the one who works for an hour versus the one who works all day, and they both get the same amount of pay.
Oh, I love that one in Matthew.
And that's a real challenging one. And I guess that's maybe like what I like about parables is that the answers are not necessarily really obvious, and maybe we're supposed to think more. So I don't know, I'm just throwing that out because I, as I was thinking about parables, it struck me there, kind of like in the Zen tradition, koans, which is, you know, a statement that makes no sense, that has no answer. You know, what's the sound of one hand clapping? So maybe that's what we're supposed to be doing here is thinking.
Love that. You will, you will enjoy the fourth session, and we're going to go into that specific parable, actually, and and take a, take a deep dive on it. So that's great. Love that. Thanks so much, Bob. All right. Who else hasn't gone? When I shifted back from screen sharing, it shifted the order all around. Adriana, I see.
Ah, yes, I'm interested in it just because I have been enjoying some, another podcast, and that's the person that's on that podcast is going to be a guest in one of these sessions. I'm looking forward to that. Going through all the parables in Matthew, and I've really gotten a lot out of the contextualization that brings in the history and the culture of the here, original hearers of the parable and and then of the audience during Matthew's time. So I'm really looking forward to this. Thanks.
Thanks, Adriana. And I'll share more information about this later in the the class, but that's that's Burton Newton with the parody and subversion in the Gospel of Matthew. It's a great podcast. We have him coming in to actually talk about that laborers and the vineyard parable. So really excited. He he was a great conversation partner when I connected with him about this. So looking forward to that. And then I think the only person I have left is Kathy Chambers. Is that right? If you want to share with us, Kathy, if you are there.
I'm here. Yeah, I'm here. I'm Kathy Chambers, and I am here because I am just curious. And I have no favorite parables.
Curiosity is a is a good way to come in. And, you know, in Zen, they'd call that beginner's mind, right? You're not coming in with with preconceptions. So thanks for sharing, y'all. I I think it's fascinating, you know, when when these stories are so well-known and so beloved, the the variety of different ways we interact with them and the ones that speak to you. One person may not speak as much to another. So I want to just lay that groundwork and get us thinking about why parables are so interesting, why they're so challenging, which ones really speak to us? Because I want us to think together about, you know, this question of what even is a parable? We're familiar with the word. We're we're familiar with at least examples of parables, because we know that Jesus loves him some parables. Now, the number here, the Gospels contain thirty-six-ish parables. Different scholars count them different ways, depending on whether you count one sentence proverbs as a parable, or whether you break one up, or whether this seed parable really counts as two when a different version of it appears in Matthew, but thirty-six-ish parables. And that's according to this count, at least, there are eight different parables in the Gospel, according to Mark. Two of those are unique to Mark entirely. There are twenty-three in the Gospel, according to Matthew, and eleven of those are ones that don't appear in any other Gospel. But Luke is the king of the parables. He has the most parables entirely, twenty-four plus eighteen unique ones. Luke is where we get things like the 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 Good Samaritan and the prodigal son. Some of the most famous ones show up there. Because parables, as it turns out, aren't, they're not just sidelined stuff. We're talking about some of the most popular ideas in Christian theology, including things like the, like the said, the prodigal son, the Good Samaritan, the weeds and the weed, the pearl of great price, the mustard seed, the sheep and the goats, the Great Bang, what you think about all these images that are so familiar to us in our tradition, and those come to us from the parables of Jesus. And scholars are pretty sure that, you know, it's hard to say exactly what Jesus said or didn't say, what did the evangelists add, or how did they editorialize? But we, scholars are pretty sure that the parables, Jesus said them. Jesus almost certainly said them because they seem to be a really distinctive way, a favorite way that he had of teaching. So let's get into some dictionary type definitions first. We've got, you know, if you go to Merriam-Webster and look up a parable, it defines it as a story intended to teach a basic truth or moral about life. And I'm always interested in the etymology of things. You gotta, you gotta dig your your Hebrew and your Greek when you're when you're Bible scholaring. So in Greek, parable comes from para and balen, which is to cast two things alongside one another. Because if you think about a parable, it's never just about what's in the parable, right? There's, there's a seed that falls into the earth, and there's a mustard seed, but it's not just a mustard seed. It's a, it's a comparison to something else. It's kind of similar that way to a metaphor, which has the the sense of, you know, you talk about someone's eyes being, being not just like the ocean, being the ocean. Well, what's what's similar about eyes and oceans? Well, they could both be blue. They could both be deep. They could both be a little terrifying. They could both be full of water, right? And so so this question of, well, how is a mustard seed like, like the rain of God? Well, let's think about that. And John Dominic Crossan, the Bible scholar whom I mentioned a little while ago, defines a parable as a metaphorical story. So it's a story that's always, isn't just about what's happening in it, but points beyond itself to a wider or deeper meaning. It's it's symbolic. It's metaphorical. It's a parable. Now, I'll be really clear about something is that often when we talk about, oh, a story which where it's not just about the things that are in it, that everything's a symbol for something else. A parable is not the same as an allegory. Because an allegory is where there is one correct way to read the work, right? So for instance, a lot of people have mentioned the Good Samaritan. We're all kind of familiar with what happens in the Good Samaritan. A man is going down the Jericho Road, and he's attacked by robbers. He's he's left half-dead, and and the priest comes by, and he he walks right past him, and a Levite comes by, and he walks right past him. But then a Samaritan comes by, and the Samaritan is moved with pity, and the Samaritan gathers up the man, and he takes him on his donkey to the nearest inn and says to the innkeeper, here are two coins. I will come back tomorrow. Take care of this man. I'll pay for anything he needs in the meantime. Right? It's it's famous. We know if we, you know, if we're sort of fluent in in Christianity, we know it like the back of our hands. Well, here's how a fourth-century theologian, Saint Augustine of Hippo, interpreted the parable of the Good Samaritan. Well, you see, the man who was going down from Jerusalem to Jericho, well, that was clearly Adam, and Jerusalem is meant to signify the heavenly city from which Adam fell. And Jericho is a word that means the moon. So that means it signifies Adam's mortality. And the robbers of the devil and his angels who strip Adam of his immortality and beat him by persuading him to sin. And they leave him half-dead. He's not physically dead, but he's dead spiritually. And and the priest and the Levite represent the priesthood and the ministry of the Old Testament, and the Samaritan represents Christ, who bandages his wounds and who gives him the comfort of good hope, which is the symbol for oil and and wine, which is encouragement to work with a fervent spirit. And and the donkey is a symbol for the flesh of Christ's incarnation. The inn is the church. And the next day is is after the resurrection. The two silver coins are the promises of life, this life and the life to come. And the innkeeper is the Apostle Paul, and I, okay? That's a way you could read it, I guess. I kind of liked it where it's about a guy helping somebody.
That's funny.
And which is not to say that Augustine's reading has to be wrong, but it feels a little limiting that way. I mean, if I read the parable, I would never have guessed it, that the, it all, it meant all of that. And that's, and that's the trouble with allegory, is that it by instituting a one-to-one correspondence between each element of the story, it can end, you can end up with something that is very clever like this, but isn't maybe particularly compelling, certainly not to me anyway. And 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 this is, so there's this distinction between allegory and parable. They could be the same thing, but they're not necessarily the same thing. And if you've heard me preach, if you know anything about me at this point at First Church, you will know that I am a gigantic fan of the Lord of the Rings and J.R. Tolkien. And yes, the inevitable Tolkien discursus. I want to offer something from his writings that I think illuminates the difference between parable and allegory really well. So in his, of course, his classic work was The Lord of the Rings. You don't have to be a fan of fantasy. You don't have to be a fan of Tolkien. I am, and I think this quote really gets at this distinction where he talks about, you know, people had read the book as being it's it's an allegory for the for the Second World War, and the Ring of Power is an atom bomb, and and it's it's all, it's all coded. It's all coded social commentary. Tolkien really didn't like that interpretation. He he would say, as for inner meaning or message, it has in the intention of the author none. It is neither allegorical nor topical. I cordially dislike allegory and all its manifestations, and always have done so since I grew old and wary enough to detect its presence. I much prefer history, true or feigned, with its varied applicability to the thought and experience of the readers. And here's the key quote. I think that many confuse applicability with allegory. But the one resides in the freedom of the reader and the other in the purposed domination of the author.
Good.
And the the kind of classic example of that is, well, if you think about fantasy, well, what would be an, what would be a fantasy where there is actually an allegory, a fantasy novel? The, well, it would probably be, one example is written by J.R. Tolkien's friend C.S. Lewis, where the the lion is, in fact, a metaphor for Jesus. If you're familiar with The Chronicles of Narnia, the lion Aslan is literally and deliberately meant as an allegory for Jesus. He is the Jesus character. And and so when you read, when you read Narnia, you don't have to read it with Aslan in mind, but that's what C.S. Lewis intended. I don't think that's what Jesus is doing with the parables, whatever brilliant interpretations Saint Augustine might do with them. So Crossan, in his book, The Power of Parable, How Fiction by Jesus Became Fiction About Jesus, says, actually, that there's, there are multiple different kinds of parables that we can talk about. A parable isn't just one thing. It's not just an allegory. You can have riddle parables, which can reveal secret or esoteric knowledge to insiders. There's an example in the Gospel of Mark where the parable of the sower gets explained to the disciples. That could be a riddle parable. You could have an example parable, which would be to offer an ethical lesson or moral exemplar. The Good Samaritan is a great example. At the end of it, Jesus asks his audience, who do you think was a neighbor to the man in need? And and the answer comes back, the one who showed him mercy, and Jesus says, go and do likewise. So a parable could be an illustration of how we're supposed to behave. It can be a moral example. Or, and I should say, it can be a challenge parable, something that's meant to overturn our assumptions, subvert our expectations, spur active thought and thoughtful action. What what Bob said about Zen Kons is a great example of that, meant to kind of trip, actually meant to trip us up and get us to think a little more deeply. And Crossan argues, and I would agree with him, and Amy Jill Levine, the Jewish New Testament scholar and author of the book Short Stories by Jesus, would argue that all of the parables are meant to be challenged parables. They might also be riddle parables or example parables, but they're all meant to be challenging. I want to give an extended quote here from Levine. What makes the parables mysterious, she writes, or difficult, is that they challenge us to look into the hidden aspects of our own values, our own lives. They bring to the surface unasked questions, and they reveal the answers we've always known but refuse to acknowledge. Therefore, if we hear a parable and think, I really like that, or worse, fail to take any challenge, we're not listening well enough. When we seek universal morals from a genre that is designed to surprise, challenge, shake up, or indict, and look for a single meaning in a form that opens to multiple interpretations, we are necessarily, I typed that wrong, necessarily limiting the parables and so ourselves. And I think that's a wonderful summation of of what the parables are up to. And Levine points out, and somebody pointed this out when we were talking in our our opening little conversation, that, you know, whatever meaning you and I are going to find in the parables, no matter which ones are our favorites or the ones that challenge us most, we have to remember that Jesus told these parables originally to a group of largely Jewish, largely poor, largely Palestinian people in the first century. And so whatever meaning Augustine or us in the 21st century, or anybody else throughout Christian history can can make with them, those earliest listeners would have been able to find meaning in them, in them too. They were the original audience, and they didn't have centuries of Christian interpretation to help them decode the parables. So whatever meaning they might have made and understanding the context that would have allowed them to make meaning with the parables is really important for us when we read them. Not because we can only find the same meaning that they did, but because well, author, authorial intent does matter a little bit, you know, maybe particularly when the author is Jesus, but in general, it's it's useful to know what the author was thinking and how the original audience might have heard it. And here I want to point out that Jesus' earliest listeners, most of them Jews, And here I want to point out that Jesus' earliest listeners, most of them Jews, wouldn't have necessarily found parables, the idea of a parable, all that unusual. In fact, they were well familiar with the genre of parable. Jesus didn't invent them. They actually appear in earlier Jewish writings. In the Mashalim or the parables in the Hebrew Bible, there's a famous one, the parable of the trees in the Book of Judges and Nathan's parable of the sheep in Second Samuel. You may be familiar with that one. So to to refresh your memory, when David, King David, sees Bathsheba bathing, he sees her bathing in rooftop and says, boy, I would really like to be married to her. So he sends her husband Uriah the Hittite out into the front rank of fighting so that he is killed so that he can marry his wife. Kind of a gross thing to do, David. And the prophet Nathan thinks that thinks that David should be taken to task for for killing a man and stealing his wife. And so Nathan tells this little parable and he says, well, there were two men and one of them had many flocks and he had, you know, dozens and hundreds of sheep and it was well attended. And another man had but one sheep, but it was his favorite sheep of all and he and he cared for it like it was his own child. And and then one day, the the rich man with the many flocks had to prepare a sheep, had to prepare food for a visitor. But instead of killing one of his own sheep, he took and killed the sheep belonging to the poor man. And David responds to this by saying, well, this is awful. That's that's terrible. How could he do that? We must find that man, that rich man and bring him to justice. And the prophet Nathan points at David and says, you are that man. It's a great dramatic moment to kind of pull the curtain aside and allows David to understand, oh, David literally says, I have sinned before God. There is a, it's a moment of reflection on himself and his behavior. So this is an example of parables found in the Hebrew Bible. And John Dominic Crossan argues that you could even read certain books like Ruth or Job or Jonah, books that may or may not be historical as book-length parables, actually. So certainly Jesus would have had a context in his Jewish upbringing in the first century that would have been like, oh, parables, that's that's a thing we do. We tell stories to to make a point. And certainly Judaism, as it developed after the time of Jesus, loved telling parables. Some of you may have heard of the Jewish concept of midrash. It is a way of interpreting scripture where in in the Jerusalem Talmud, they write that Torah, the the Bible is black fire written on white fire. The black fire is the words. It's the story. It's the actual text of the document, which limits the possible meaning we can make. But the white fire is the the space in between the words, where there are unanswered questions, where there are things that remain unsaid, where there are stories that remain untold. And that interpreting Torah faithfully and well means you have to not only look at the words, but you also have to look at what you have to read between the lines. And this coincides with the Jewish idea that Torah has has seventy faces that that you haven't actually understood scripture unless you've come up with seventy different interpretations for it. And there's there's a joke that Satya's family, my partner, her family is Jewish, and they say, you know, you get two Jews together in a room and you're going to get three different opinions. You could probably say the same for U C Seers. For what it's worth, hardly hardly limited to the Jewish community. But the point being that that for Jesus.
U C C is that if if you've seen one U C C church, you've seen one U C C church.
Boy, ain't that the truth, though? It makes it hard to explain the denomination to other people. So what's what's the U C C? I can tell you about the First Congregational Church of Long Beach. But they're different than other U C Cs I've served, which I also loved. Maybe we're we're a parabolic community that way. But my point, kind of the point here being that not unlike the U C C, it's very much in 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 the Jewish tradition to tell stories, to to make a point, to challenge assumptions, to reinterpret the tradition itself. And Jesus, in this, as in everything, was a devout and practicing Jew. And so as we move through the the course and as we unpack specific parables, that's going to be one of the main interpretive lenses that I'm going to bring and I'm really going to rely largely on Amy Jill Levine there to help us make sense of these stories in their original Jewish context. So this is all well and good. We've got some interpretive frameworks. We've got some definitions. We've got some favorite parables. We've got some some examples from the secular world. Okay. All that's fascinating. But but what's the point? Right? Like what what? Why are we telling the parables in the first place? What is? What is the the goal toward which we are tending? What is what is the purpose of these stories? Because they can certainly be entertaining. But I think Jesus was trying to be more than entertaining. They can certainly be instructive, but I think Jesus might even have been trying to be more than just instructive. What are the parables about? Well, to use some some gendered and archaic language for it, the parables are all about the kingdom of God or the reign of God or the empire of God or the Commonwealth of Peace and Freedom. You take your pick. It doesn't have to be the word kingdom. But that's how Jesus introduces a lot of these parables. He says, what is the kingdom of God? What is the reign of God like? To what shall I compare it? What parable can I tell? To communicate to you the nature of this new reality, of this good news of God that I'm bringing. And so he deploys as many metaphors as he can. And and sometimes I wonder if there are parables we don't know about because Jesus was a creative guy. He's like, what is the kingdom of God like? What is the reign of God like? Well, maybe it's like a sourdough starter. Maybe it's like yeast or or maybe it's like a mustard seed that grows up into a huge bush. Or or maybe it's like a really generous landowner who who pays his workers more than they deserve. Or maybe it's like a forgiving father, or maybe it's like a seed. Or maybe it's like the sower. Maybe the kingdom is like that. Or maybe it's like a treasure hidden in a field or a beautiful pearl or a magnificent banquet and on and on and on. Trying always to get his listeners to think, well, if that's if that's what the reign of God is like, if that's what the beloved community, to use some language from Martin Luther King Jr., if that's what the beloved community is like, whoa. What does that even look like? What does it mean that the kindom of God is like a mustard seed? What does it mean that it's like someone who goes searching for a lost sheep? What does it mean to say the kingdom of God is like that, that enacted parable at Pilgrim Pines? And I don't want to give you one answer tonight. But I do want to in this manner of the parables, I want to charge your imagination. So this comes from a book called The Cotton Patch Parables of Liberation. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about it here and we'll learn more from that later. Perhaps some of you are familiar with it, but in that book it says, the parables of Jesus lead us into the kingdom, the kingdom of God. They come to us where we are. They make use of things and feelings familiar to us. They transport us into an unfamiliar realm of values and relationships. And they invite us to make ourselves at home. Cotton Patch Parables of Liberation were composed by a guy named Clarence Jordan in his community Coininia Farm, which was a integrated, multiracial, poor farming community in rural Georgia that he founded in the the Dust Bowl era. And the farm became during the age of the civil rights and integration movements. It it became a site of attack. The KKK bombed it. People, people were attacked there because they they had black folks and white folks living together and working the land together. And and it was also, incidentally, Clarence Jordan was intimately involved in the creation of Habitat for Humanity. So it was a pretty neat little community out there, living, living the gospel as best they knew how. And and Jordan wrote these really fascinating and fun and folksy and startling translations into modern English, into folksy modern English of the of the parables, well, of of much of the New Testament. In addition to being a farmer and a radical, he was also a biblical Greek scholar. Like you do. But I'll share a little bit more of those later in in the course, but if you're interested, I can really recommend this book. It's it's lovely and provocative and Jordan's, Jordan's, I should say, translations or paraphrases are really, I think they still hit sixty years later. But this idea that the kingdom of God is something that's that's beyond describing, or if we can describe it, we can only use images, metaphors, parables, poetry. So tonight I don't want to tell you what Jesus means by the kingdom of God. I want us to, you know, maybe, maybe that's your question as we as we go away from from tonight's little session, as we think about what what is the kingdom? What is the reign of God? What does the good news look like? To me, you know, where where could I find good news in in that favorite parable I mentioned? Where could I see a glimpse of the reign of God in the parable I mentioned at the top of the hour? John Dominic Crossan calls parables participatory pedagogy, because they don't have just one correct answer. Everybody has to participate by interpreting them for him, her, or themselves. And so that is the kind of pedagogy I want to use as as the class continues. And as we we look at these stories, I want to offer not the interpretation, but some interpretations and ways to think about these these stories that are so important in the in the history and the and the theology of of our of our Christian community. So right now, I would love if people have have sort of thoughts or questions that are arising, because I'd love to get down, if you've got questions that would come up as we've been talking. These are the kinds of things that I would love to know to be able to, you know, address in in later class sessions, whether you're there or not. So did anybody have any questions that arose for them as we've been talking about what parables are and and how they work and a little bit of of how we might think about them?
Just back on something that Aviana said, touching on something she said was how universal the parables are and how we would, how we hear them today based on how our world is and our worldview and how we've quote evolved, end quote, as a, you know, as people. And how they were understood and perceived and meant at the time and just how universal they are. And that's fascinating to me. So I'm really looking forward to to your sessions.
Thanks for 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 raising that. Oh, I mean, I think your point, it it will never cease to amaze me that stories told by people so different from me two thousand years ago still speak to my life. I think that's it's kind of amazing, honestly, especially in a culture where we seem to forget when things move so quickly that we forget what things were like last week, let alone ten years ago, let alone twenty years ago. Well, at least at least people my age tend to. But but I feel like our culture is so quick, fast-moving and so obsessed with the new that sometimes it's like, oh, right, people have been grappling with some of these questions for two thousand years. That's, how how neat is that?
I have just a really quick question.
Yes, Sarah.
And that is about where the Jesus Seminar is on the truth of the parables as far as that these were something that Jesus actually said.
So I am not a a Jesus Seminar scholar. I'm aware of their work. And I know that that's been something that some some previous ministers and educators at First Church have been really, really keen on. I think Jerry Stinson is still involved with the Jesus Seminar. And my, to the best of my knowledge, they are largely regarded as, at least the kernels, the germs of the parables are regarded as authentic words of Jesus because they're so challenging. And Crossan goes into this in the book that I quoted, The Power of Parable, and and Amy Jill Levine, actually. What's interesting is that we know, we we can suspect that they were original sayings of Jesus because the evangelists have already started interpreting them. Right? The evangelists have already started saying things like, well, here's what the parable of the prodigal son is about. Right? Or here's, here's, you know, the gospel according to Luke, we'll talk about this, takes the Good Samaritan and it puts it in the conver- the context of a conversation between Jesus and and a lawyer who are talking about, well, what is the greatest commandment? Well, to love God and to love your neighbor. Ah, but who is my neighbor? And that's a story that happens without the parable in other gospels. So it may have happened exactly like that. Certainly, that's the story that gets told in Luke, but we but their point is that we already start to see the the evangelists putting little stories around the stories. And so that that makes us suspect that the stories themselves are original because they could be this is what the scholars, some scholars think anyway, is that they could be taken out of just, oh, that's a thing Jesus said once and ah, but it's a thing Jesus said right here in this particular context. And you may, you may have a different understanding of the Bible on the historicity of the the gospels, but I think it's kind of a compelling point that, oh, yeah, that makes sense to me. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Other, I think I saw Pam. Go ahead.
Yeah, what what I find interesting in these parables, I mean, these took place two thousand years ago, but yet there's still a common theme or a common understanding on values or what's important. And and that's, I always find that fascinating that regardless how much we change, I mean, we're in 2020, the 21st century. But when you come down to it, people really want the same things. You know, I mean, their core beliefs or core values. And I just find that interesting when you go back through history and how some of those common themes are still important today as they were, you know, back when Jesus lived.
Amen. I I totally agree. Thanks, sir, for sharing that, Pam. Any other questions or thoughts that are occurring to you as we've gone through kind of this whirlwind, you know, defining a parable?
How parabolic would you consider the Book of Revelation?
Who? Great question. Who? You asking me? Are you asking for a scholarly consensus? I I think the I think you could totally read the the Book of Revelation as as a long parable. I think that it's 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 got all of the the hallmarks of of it's not just about the the demons or the dragons or the 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 seven horns, the ten heads. There's clearly those things mean something outside of the story. Or but but they also could mean something in our day and age, right? Like it meant something to the original hearers who were living under Imperial Rome, but it could still totally mean something to us living today in in the 21st century. And so I think exactly that kind of interpretive framework, a parabolic interpretive framework can totally apply. Hold on. Are people yelling outside? Sorry, I was just getting some 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 feedback in there. But but great question. Great question. Other thoughts, feelings, responses? Yeah, Pam, something else.
I'm really looking forward to the rest of this, these sessions. Very provocative, you know, this first one. I mean, a lot of good information. So it's it's a good teaser for the rest of the class. Thank you.
That's that's the idea. I'm not quite done yet, but I've got one more. I've got one. I've got an open-ended ending or an open-ended beginning, if you like. But I want to make sure that anybody else who had a thought has a chance to uh to chime in before the end of the hour here.
I'll 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 chime in just with a question. I I have a question and that's here are these stories that we're sitting around and I suspect that everybody in this little session has had a, at least a college education or close to it. And these parables were stories told to illiterate people. And when I think about that, And when I think about that, I guess it just makes me think a little bit more.
Thank you for bringing that. I think that's, that, that's such a great point about. Exactly. That's one of the things that is really hard for us if we're highly literate, highly educated people. It's not just that we live in the 21st century in America. It's also that we can read. Most of the people who heard these probably couldn't even read. If they, if they knew, if they knew the Bible at all, which they did, they would have known it in, in oral paraphrases. They would have, they would have known it as an oral history. And so these stories, remember, were spoken initially by Jesus. First of all, they were spoken in Aramaic. Um, a language which the gospels are. Well, there is an Aramaic version of the gospels, but that's a complex textual history that I don't want to get into just right now. But you're exactly right, Bob, that. Oh, what would this mean to somebody who can't read, who, who makes their living as a shepherd or as a day laborer? Um, absolutely. That is, that is part of the, uh, in the, the historical work. That as, you know, relatively educated people, many of us, maybe not all of us, but certainly I have a, I have an upper level degree. So that's part of the interpretive work that I'm hoping we can do. Together to help us think about that. Go ahead.
So then the, then the follow-up to that is, is that. And, and in my mind, I'm, I'm judging. That those people without their education, without their literacy, that they would. Probably not. Understand, but in fact. I suspect that the wisdom of the illiterate. Uh, individuals. Was probably as, as good or as insightful as the literacy of these highly educated people here. And I'm just posing that as an option that, that intelligence is not based on our education or a capacity to. Interpret and, and, you know, write. And I mean. I'm wonderful that we have someone who's offered us a book about the parables, who's a Jew and so forth. But I suspect the people of his time were really wise.
Yes, I'm not going to let you teach the course. Congratulations. Um, no, you're, you're, I mean, I absolutely agree with you. Um. And, and what I hope to offer is, is. Some, some interpretive frameworks, some history, some, some, you know, some, some, uh, biblical scholarship, but you're absolutely right that. That doesn't mean that, that my interpretation with all of my, the history that we offer and all the, the, the frameworks that we offer is any more valid. In fact, it might even be more removed from the point than those of the people who first heard them and, and didn't have, you know, access to any of that. So thank you so much for raising that up. I really appreciate it. All right. Well, on that note, actually, I'd love to share a parable with you to close out this session of our time together. Uh, and this one comes to us, uh, not from the, uh, first century in Jewish Palestine. But rather comes to us, uh, from a few centuries later in, uh, Jewish Europe. I'm going to go down to the end here. So. Let's see here. This is the. So this is the parable of the rooster prince of Breslov. And this is a Hasidic Jewish parable, and I want to end with it because I think it really captures a lot of the kind of, uh, uh. Co- complexity and, and fun and, and foolish wisdom that we've just been talking about. So once. There was a king and a queen who had a son. And suddenly their son, the prince, this is in, this is in Europe. This is in Eastern Europe in the, uh, 17th, 18th centuries during the rise of Hasidic Judaism. Uh, they had a prince, a son who believed one day just came down with the belief that he was a rooster. And he could not be disabused of this notion. He, uh, began to. He would not respond to words spoken to him. He would cluck and caw and crow. And he would not wear clothing because roosters do not wear clothing, of course. And he would eat nothing except seed corn thrown on the floors of the sumptuous palace that his. That his mother and father, the king and queen ruled over and they. Naturally wanted to figure out what was wrong with the kid. So they invited in physicians from, from England and from the Ottoman Empire and from the furthest points of Russia and, and from the, the. East, from China and India. And they invited in wise men and philosophers and, and asked, how can we help our son? How can we bring him back to himself? And none of, none of it worked. He was still there under the kitchen table, cockadoodled doing it up. Till one day. An old, wise, Hasidic Jewish master came along with his. Long beard and his ringlets and his black, his black garments and. Uh, he, he went to the king and queen and said, I think. I have heard that you have a, have a problem with your son. They're like, yes, take a look at him. He's, he's under the table. He's, he's clucking like a chicken. And the old man looked at him for a moment and said. I can help with this. And immediately he removed his own clothing, took off his hat, got underneath the table and started clucking it up with the prince. Now, of course, the king and the queen were baffled by this, but they were assured by the, by the, by the greatest religious sages that this man, this man was a master. Trust him. And so the man spent several days, the sage spent several days under the table, wandering the palates with the prince. Both of them without clothing, without words, eating seed corn off the floor, hiding under tables, crowing at the dawn. Until one day. The, the Hasidic master began to put on a shirt. And the, the prince, the prince objected. The prince, the prince spoke for the first time. He said. Roosters do not wear shirts. And the Hasidic master said, ah. But. Why should not a rooster be clothed like a man? Why she can also not, if you were a prince, no, why should not, why should not a rooster also be as, as comfortable as a man? The prince thought about that and said, huh. I guess why shouldn't a rooster be as comfortable as a man? So he put on a shirt. And then they went about their business for a couple of days, just wandering around the palace in shirts. And eventually the, the, the master began to put on a pair of pants and the bris, and the, and the rooster prince was, no, 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 no. Roosters do not wear pants. And the response is the same as last time. Ah, but why should not a, a rooster be as, as, as comfortable as a man? Why should he not wear pants? I guess that makes sense. Whether it made sense or not is, is really not quite the point, but to the young man it did. And slowly over time, the old, the old master would reintroduce. Pieces of clothing. And so eventually he had the prince walking around the palace and he was still clucking and eating seed corn, but he had pants on and he had shoes on and he had his crown back on. And eventually he was starting to use language again. And eventually he was starting to eat with forks. And knives and dinner plates again. And at last. After much time spent with the young man, he was wholly cured. The prince was cured. The queen and king tried to reward the old Hasidic sage for his work, but. He simply went his way. With a handful of seed corn in his pocket. I'm not going to interpret that for you. I'm just going to leave you with it. If you, if you have thoughts about what it might mean, you can, you can check back in next week or grab me after the service and say, man, I don't, I, I don't get, I don't get the rooster parable. I don't get, wha- what was the deal with the rooster? So on that lighthearted note, that open-ended beginning, I want to thank you all for, for coming out tonight and for, for thinking about these things with me. And I hope you'll join me for some more classes. Uh, as we take deep dives into specific parables and really start thinking about these original contexts and how we can read these stories for the 21st century. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Bob.
See you next week.